Okay. Good evening. My name is Sam Baydoun and I proudly serve the 13th District on the Wayne County Commission, representing the great residents of Dearborn and Allen Park. Tonight, I am joined by the Wayne County Treasurer, Mr. Eric Sabri. Our main topic of discussion tonight will be tax foreclosure. This topic is very important to many Wayne County homeowners as well as business owners. As a real estate broker, this is a conversation that I have with many of the homeowners and business owners throughout Wayne County, especially around this time of the year, Mr. Sabri. We will focus on these dates coming up here in March, on March 1st and March 31st. Tonight, we will be discussing delinquent taxes and what your options are as homeowners and business owners. And if you have any questions, please put the comments in the section and the questions in the comment section and I will do my best to get to your question. With that, I would like to welcome Mr. Sabri and Mr. Sabri, if we'd like to say anything before we open up with our questions, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you Commissioner Baydoun. Good evening. Evening to everyone that has joined us. I'm honored to serve as a Wayne County Treasurer for the past five years and this year, this past year has been very, very difficult and challenging for everyone. So, we wanted, we want to do everything we can and we're working very hard to try to keep everyone in their, in their homes and in their businesses. So, tonight, we have a lot of information to share with you and we hope that you will in turn share that information with others, your neighbors, friends, relatives, whoever you think may need some help with the delinquent property taxes.
Mr. Sabri, can you briefly explain to our viewers what delinquent taxes are?
Okay, yes. Originally, when you, when you get your first tax bill each year, it's from, it's called the current tax bill. It comes out in July and then there's another bill, the winter, the summer tax, then the winter tax comes out December 1st. Those are considered current taxes. They're sent out by the local municipality. That'd be Dearborn and Allen Park, the communities that you represent. They, they send out the bills. If they're not paid before March 1st, they become delinquent. So, we're about, we're approaching that, that time this year. This is the time where the 2020 taxes are about to become delinquent.
On that point, Mr. Sabri.
Yes.
Up until March 1st, they can pay it at the local municipality with the interest and penalty, but after that, it comes to Wayne County.
Right. After that, I think this year, the first, the last day you can pay delinquent tax is March 1st because the, the last day of February is on the weekend.
It's a weekend.
So, you get, the statute says that, that Monday will be still, March 1st is still the last day, so it won't be delinquent until March 2nd this year.
And how long was, since we're talking about that subject, because that's very important. How long will it take for someone to look up the delinquent amount on the county website to find out? For example, for 2020, if they haven't paid and come March 1st, how long will it take for them to see the actual amount with the interest and the penalty on your website?
That's an important question because it depends on when the municipality sends their tax rolls to us. Everyone doesn't do it exactly on March, the first day. We, some people send it in the March 2nd, some send it in March 5th, 4th, 3rd, so we get some stragglers. But for the most part, in a week or so, I say after, you can look and look it up and be pretty, pretty certain you'll find any, any municipality has turned over their delinquent file and you can see how much you owe delinquent taxes.
Okay, Mr. Sabri, another question, how can someone find out if they qualify for assistance with delinquent property taxes through the property tax exemption program?
Okay. Can I go back to your first question a little bit?
Sure, sure.
The first, I want to mention to, to the viewers that there are three different categories of delinquency. First year of delinquency, and since we're talking about 2020 taxes, those 2020 taxes on March 2nd, they'll become what we call delinquent. That's the very first year of delinquency. On the March 1st of next year, they'll become forfeited, which means that's the second year of delinquency and then the third year is just foreclosure. So, there are three different of, and some people get the notices saying it's forfeited and they think it's foreclosed. When, you know, they, they don't know the difference between the two words. Forfeited doesn't mean you're going to lose your property. But what it does mean that if it goes into the second year of delinquency, then you're going to have a lien placed on your property and you're going to get hit with a couple hundred dollars of forfeiture fees and interest, extra interest. So, I just wanted to clear that up because since we're close to March 1st, a lot of people, if you can pay your 2019 taxes now, do it before March 1st and you save a few hundred dollars if you can do it.
For those people who are behind on their property taxes, for example, 2018, 2019 and 2020, the first thing they should do is pay 2018 because that's the, the one that will affect whether they lose their property or not.
That's the smart thing to do. Yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll get to your next question, which is how they qualify for assistance through the property tax exemption. Well, every, every municipality, right, because of state law, has to have a property tax exemption. And two, there are two types of property tax exemptions. One is because of low income and the other is if you're a hundred percent disabled veteran. If you're a hundred percent disabled veteran, then you could qualify for a property tax exemption. You have to apply at your local assessor's office. If you're low income, every community has its own chart, its own, as to what the income limits are for a number of people in each household. You have to also apply at the local assessor's office. So, you qualify by going to your local assessor's office and seeing if your income is low enough or if you're a hundred percent disabled veteran. Yep.
Yes. In, in the city of Dearborn, that chart is like 50%. If you qualify based on economic hardship, they will cut your property taxes by 50%. And one of my questions was going to be about veterans and there are programs for veterans who qualify. They will not pay any taxes, but they have to apply every year.
They have to apply every year, yes.
Yeah. Okay, another question, Mr. Sabri, how can a person obtain a copy of a delinquent tax bill?
Okay, if you go to the Wayne County Treasurer's website, treasurer.waincounty.com. It's treasurer.waincounty.com. Go to the homepage and then, and we scroll down. In one of the bullets there, you know, the squares we have, it says, obtain a copy of tax bill. And you just click on that and you put your address in and get a, and get a copy of your bill.
Okay. Now, when will the, the county foreclose on the homeowners who are behind on 2017, 2018 property taxes? We touched on it a little bit and for those who are watching us, as you know, the Wayne County Treasurer put a moratorium, put a hold on foreclosure in 2020, which would have been the 2017 taxes, realistically, right? Am I right?
That's correct.
Put a hold on 2017. This year, come March 1st, you start the process, you're going to be foreclosing on 2017 and 2018 simultaneously.
That's correct.
Okay, so if someone is trying to stay in their property, Mr. Sabri, and they're behind on 2017, 2018, 19 and 20, so they must pay 2017 and 2018, correct?
Well, we have, we can get into a, get into a payment agreement with us. And also, if they have a hardship, we have hardship applications for individuals who, financial hardship. So, that's your next question, I think. How do you apply for the financial hardship?
Yes.
Well, there's a, the state law allows a treasurer to, I'll read a little bit how, what it says about hardship. It says, you know, pursuant to Michigan Capella Law 211.78, it is a policy of the Wayne County Treasurer to withhold property from petition of foreclosure if the person requesting relief is undergoing substantial financial hardship and submits a timely application for withdrawal. It proves evidence of the hardship that they're, that they're undergoing. So, for instance, you don't have to be only a low income person to apply for a hardship. You know, it could be because you're ill, because of age, because of any, a number of circumstances. People can apply for hardship. What, what would that do? That will allow you more time. That will allow you more time. But it's going to have, you have to apply for it. You have to show, you know, I've, I've been in the hospital, I lost my job. And also, we want to know, can you pay something? Can you get into a payment agreement and work with us to pay something? And we can extend your time, you see, so that you don't get foreclosed this year. That's how, they have to contact our office, basically.
So, again, this is very important, Mr. Sabri. Focus on 2017.
Okay.
The tax here that could potentially make someone lose their property. If someone has not contacted your office and they're listening to us tonight, here we are in the middle of February. We have two more weeks until March 1st or so, or less than two weeks, actually. Can they still enter into an agreement on the 2017 property taxes?
Yes, they can. If it's their home, if they live in, if it's their home.
And this is a residential residence, yes.
Residential residence. They can enter into a payment agreement. If they haven't already entered into one, they can enter in one and put both years in that payment grant. Matter of fact, they can put 17, 18 and 19 in that same agreement. And the interest rate is, is only 6% a year instead of the regular 18.
6%.
Because they're residential homeowners and they have five years to pay it off. But the other condition is you have to also pay your current taxes each year along with the delinquency. But the delinquency payment is very low, so they'd be able to do both at the same time.
Okay, now, does this agreement that you just highlighted, does that also apply to business owners?
Well, this, the business owner agreement is a little different. Business owners and landlords were different and I'll explain the difference. Usually, every year, you have to renew your agreement if you're a landlord or a business owner, non-owner occupant residential. Because instead of a five-year plan, which the legislature gave the owner occupants with lower interest rate, you have to pay the regular 18% a year, it's one and a half percent per month. And you have to do this payment agreement over a 10-month period. So, the way we started off in November, in December, 10% down, January is 20, February is 30, March is 40. So, the longer you take to get into agreement, the more money you have to put down. So, what we did this year and we expanded and amended the hardship policy for landlords with five properties or less and for business owners. So, if you are financially, suffering a financial hardship, you can put 25% down of the amount of, of, of money that you owe that's facing foreclosure. For instance, the 17th and 18th, you can put 25% down of that amount and you would have two years, which is till March 9th of 2023 to pay off the balance, the other 75%. This is extending it beyond another 14 months beyond what we normally do. Because usually, it, payment plans end every November and then we start over again every year. But because of COVID-19 and the hardships that businesses and some landlords have been facing, we amended the policy, say, put 25% down of the years that are facing foreclosure and then we can stretch out the rest of your payments over a two, a two-year period. But they have to provide some documentation. The application for doing it is on our website again and you just scroll down and you see hardship policy, application for landlords, application for business owners. They fill it out, bring it, submit it to our office and then we can, we can work with them to help save their, save their property.
Thank you. And, and, and having worked with your, with your office, even before I became a commissioner, because of my real estate, the other job that I have as a real estate broker, I have worked with your office and I know firsthand that the last thing the Wayne County Treasurer wants to do is kick somebody out of their homes. And, and I know on several occasions, when I reached out to your department, they did the work with the homeowners and they entered into payment agreement and several of these homeowners, their, their properties were saved and they're still living in their homes. And I want to thank you, Mr. Sabri. Now, another question that we have. We, you touched on it a little bit. If someone simply does not have the ability to pay their property taxes, even the delinquent ones, I am sure there are nonprofit organizations and other programs out there. Does your office guide these, these homeowners? Do they guide them into maybe reaching out to these organizations to see if they can help them with paying the property taxes?
Absolutely, we do. We, we work with Wayne Metro. Wayne Metro is one of our partners because we have a financial empowerment center and which gives free counseling, free financial advice. Also, we work with United Community Housing Coalition, Southwest Solutions. You snap back, a number of other nonprofits and some of them actually have dollars. Last year, we were fortunate enough, one, one of our banks, local banks, they didn't want me to identify them, I guess. They just said, don't, we don't want any publicity. They gave $300,000 to Wayne Metro for a specific purpose of helping keep people out of their home, keep people in their homes, keep people out of foreclosure, excuse me. And what they did, they saved about 350 people. They, Wayne Metro also this year had some CARES Act funding for called Emergency Housing Relief Funds. They use them for rental assistance. Also, they used it for foreclosure prevention. So, even if someone doesn't have the money, we tell them, don't be afraid to come and see us because we can refer you to someone who can possibly help with the finances. If you have a little bit, you don't have all the money you need, they can sometime match it and get you out of foreclosure. So, and, and, and then Commissioner Baydoun, the hardship application too will give them another year. If they're, if they're, if they really can't do anything, then we can also withhold that property for another year to keep them out of foreclosure. But we try, we try to work with them to get, to pay something because we don't want the bill to get so big that they can't handle it in the future.
Yes, and, and they stay in their homes even though they cannot pay, they cannot afford to pay. They're worried about putting food on their tables. They can still stay in their homes while they're waiting for the, the hardship process, if you will, and the applications to be approved.
Also, also, I want to mention another thing. I, I'm sorry I didn't cut you off. But I want, I want, I want to mention that there are a lot of people who are waiting for COVID relief money. They're waiting for these checks that are, that are, they're arguing about in Washington. They're waiting for this money and some business owners are waiting for some assistance. So, we, we don't want them to lose their property while they're wait, while this, this money is in the process of coming. So, we're going to get, we're working out the time. We're giving people more time. That's what it is.
So, in other words, there are a lot of options out there, but the first step a homeowner or a business owner has to take is to contact your office and, and, and start talking to you and, and see what options they have and to enter into some type of an agreement.
Right. I'd like to give out our email address too.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
A couple of times, the email is taxinfo, it's T-A-X-I-N-F-O at WayneCounty.com. It's taxinfo@WayneCounty.com. Our phone number is 313-224-5990. 313-224-5990. And I can put that in the chat before we conclude. Yeah, and so you have it.
224-5990, okay.
But we can reach people, they can contact us by email, put their phone number in, we'll call them back. We work with them because you have to make an appointment now to come to the office because of COVID-19.
Yes.
Yes, so that makes it a little more difficult. But once you do the appointment system, it's much easier. You don't have to wait in long lines. So, there's a good side to that, too.
While we're talking about this very important subject, Mr. Sabri, I remember before the pandemic, when you came before us in 2019, you informed the Wayne County Commission that there were about 350 homeowners, if I remember correctly, in the city of Detroit that owed amounts less than a thousand dollars and you were working very hard to reach many of these homeowners before they lose their property. Can you update us on that? Were you successful in reaching a lot of these homeowners?
Yes, we were. We were successful in reaching them. But matter of fact, the money that the bank donated that I talked about.
Yes.
That was, that was geared toward the people who owe less than a thousand dollars. So, we were able to get, they were able to put some money in and then, and in order to stretch those dollars, they had like a matching program where people said, well, I have, I need, I need 800, I only have 400. Well, they were able to get the other 400, keep them out of foreclosure. And so, that, that program, along with the Pay As You Stay program, which is through those who are exempt and get exemptions and then have delinquent taxes also, that's helped a number of people, not only clear, clear their taxes in the past, but have a, a clear path going forward because they're exempt.
Okay, it just struck me, there's, there's, there's a situation that happened with one of my friends in Dearborn. And I found out about it when it was late. I don't know if there's some kind of an arrangement or some kind of a technology where the system of Wayne County Treasurer is connected to every municipality knowing. Let me tell you what happened here and this will, will, will set up the, the discussion here. So, one of my friends walked into the city of Dearborn. He was paying back taxes. So, they looked it up on the computer and they took his taxes for 2015. He owed, I believe, for 2015 and 16. And 14 was delinquent. It was already foreclosed on. He did not know that. So, the city took the money for 2015 instead of applying it to 2014 where he does not lose the property. And that's how he lost the, the property. And this is one of those cases where the house was sold and, and, and the money came back to Wayne County. Now, we can talk about that lawsuit a little bit later, that it was in Oakland County, I believe.
Yeah, that, that, what you just, what you just described happens more than it should. The local municipalities, because the taxpayer owes that money, they, they, a lot of times, they don't tell them, you should pay your delinquents first. Because they, they owe the money, they, they collect the money. And, and we feel, you know, that's not, that's not good. That's not good faith. Because you know, you know that the person should pay their delinquency first or they're going to lose their property.
But also, in defense of the city of Dearborn in this case, on their system, it did not show 2014.
Yeah, right. Oh, I see. They didn't know.
2014. So, that's why I'm saying, if there's a way where, you know, each of these cities can flag the accounts of these property addresses, if someone comes in to pay property taxes and, and, and it showed, it should automatically give a red flag that, wait a minute, don't pay for this year because you owe for the prior year. And if you don't pay the prior year, you could lose your property. That's what happened in this situation that I'm talking to you.
That's a good point. We, it's easy to check, check the taxes online, actually.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, but a lot of people don't and.
No, and, and the treasurers and local treasurers, I mean, they don't necessarily have the time to check everyone's property. But I think that that would be, if we could share our, part of our system, would make it easier for them to just check it. Because, I mean, it's, but it's pretty easy just to put up Wayne County Treasury and put up there, check my tax bill. It's, it may be just as fast to do that than, than anything else, but that's, that's important. That's very important because a lot of taxpayers go to the kiosk and that takes, we have 100 kiosks now. And what, sometimes the kiosk collects, like the city of Dearborn, Detroit and others, they have the current taxes collections and they have delinquent tax collections on the kiosk. So, if the taxpayer is not paying attention, they'll pay the current taxes when they intended to pay the delinquent taxes. So, we've, we've worked with the kiosk company to try to make it really clear of what you're paying. So, it's gotten a lot better. It's gotten a lot better. Yeah.
That's good. Mr. Sabri, the next question. How can someone purchase a home that has delinquent taxes that are owned? How can someone buy a home if they have delinquent taxes on that property?
You're talking about buying that, that particular home?
Yeah.
Buying back?
Yeah, the question that came to us, how can someone purchase a home that shows delinquent taxes are owed?
Okay, I, I get it now. Yeah, I get a, I get a lot of questions. I get that question very often. People say, I see a house on my street. It looks like it's going to foreclosure. I want to try to buy it. How do I buy it? What can I do? Can I get it before, you know? Well, here's the way it works. If the property goes into foreclosure, the first entity that gets to, to get that property is the state of Michigan. It's called the right of refusal.
Yes.
The state, the state is first.
Yes.
The municipality is second and the county is third in that order. So, the, the neighbor who's been cutting the grass and, or boarding up the house or doing the things to keep vandals and thieves away, they, they want to know what can they do to get this property? Because it's in their neighborhood, they invest the interest and all so forth, so forth and so on. There's really nothing that they can do before the, the right of refusal or the auction. The only thing they can do is try to find the owner and purchase the property before it goes into foreclosure, which is often very difficult. And then they could enter into a payment agreement before, before they, you know, lose the property. But that's a, that's a, that's a difficult one because there are a lot of properties like that, that people would love to have. But we don't have the authority or the, the latitude to just say, hey, we're interested in the property here. You know, once it gets foreclosed, you can buy it. We, we, we don't have the latitude to do that. The statute tells us how we have to go about disposing of property.
While we're talking about the subject of property disposition, how many, if you, if you know the answer, how many homes are in the, in, in, in the treasurer's office that are, that have been foreclosed on for 2015 taxes, 2016? And they're vacant or possibly someone is still living in them, but they're owned by the county. When will those go up for sale? Is it going to be this year in September?
Those past properties, properties that did not sell in past auctions or, we don't have anything in our inventory. It's either in the Detroit Land Bank or the Wayne County Land Bank.
Okay.
The land banks have those properties and they market the properties independently of the treasurer's office.
Oh, independently of the treasurer's office, okay.
They have websites and auctions and, and sales. So, they sell a lot of vacant lots. I know Wayne County Land Bank does. They don't have too many homes, but they do have a lot of land. They get a lot of land. But they do have homes that they work with and they sell and they've, they've been doing a good job, especially in Highland Park. I know they've been doing a lot.
Okay. Okay, what does it mean to be in forfeiture? Does that mean someone loses their property if they're in forfeiture?
No, that's a good question again. Forfeiture is the second year of delinquency. Forfeiture, what happens when you go into forfeiture? The 2019 taxes are about to go into forfeiture on March 2nd. 2019 taxes. That means that you're going to the second year. What happens is the county takes a lien on the property, puts a lien on the property and also chart, gets title work done on the property in order to prepare for foreclosure another year, the next year. They do title work. They do a forfeiture fees. So, the interest also goes from the first year of delinquency, the interest is only 12% a year, 1% a month. When it goes into forfeiture, it goes retroactively back to become 18% a year. So, it's all, you, you only paid 12% a year for the first year, now you're paying 18%. That's why it's so important if a person can pay the 2019 taxes, for instance, before March 2nd this year, they will save at least $200 or $300, at least, just, just by doing it, just by paying the, the, the taxes out of the first year of delinquency. Instead of, a lot of people feel like, well, I'll, I'll wait till next year. I got plenty of time. I'm not going to lose it. Well, you're not going to lose the property, but you're just throwing away money. And, and you have a lien on your property, so you can't borrow, you can't refinance, you can't sell it without removing that lien. So, if you don't have to do it, I would say, you know, avoid forfeiture, avoid that altogether.
And, and many of these properties that we're talking about, Mr. Sabri, many of these homes, if not all of them, do not have mortgages on them. They're free and clear. People just fall behind on the property taxes and that's how they get foreclosed on. Because if they have a mortgage on their property and they don't have an escrow with the lender, because a lot of them, they have an escrow with their payment, the, the bank will pay, will cover the taxes because the bank does not want to lose the property.
Right.
But when, when the lender, when they don't have an escrow account and the bank gets notified by the county that this property is going to go into foreclosure, the bank will step in and they will pay the property taxes and they will assess it and they add it to the mortgage. That's from my experience speaking here. So, the point is, a lot of these people live in their homes for many years and it's free and clear. They don't have mortgages. They don't have mortgages, but they just fall behind on the property taxes.
That's right. It's free and clear. And also if they, if they do have mortgages and a lot of times there's clauses, as you already know, being a real estate broker, a lot of times they have clauses to say, if you, if you fall behind and we have to pay the taxes, they can, and they can start mortgage foreclosure proceedings against the, uh, against the owner. Because they fall behind, and same with land contracts, yeah.
It, it's also worth noting here, many people fall behind on their taxes for many reasons. Economic reasons, health issues, but also sometimes people neglect to pay the water bill. And when they don't pay water for so many months, it gets assessed on their property. So instead of, for example, they have a tax bill of three thousand dollars, all of the sudden they have a tax bill for five thousand dollars because they haven't paid their water bill and it keeps accumulating with interest and penalty. It starts at the city and now they fall behind and it comes back to the county. So
That's a very important point though, because, uh, people would try to, they try to separate the water from the taxes. But the law, what happens is when the city turns it over to, to us, it's all one bill, it's all taxes.
It is all the tax.
Oh, it all becomes tech, part of the taxes. We can't separate it and say, you know, you can pay the tax and don't pay the water. Because we, when we borrow money, we, we, we fund the delinquent tax revolving fund and fund these cities for the delinquency they don't collect. Then, then water is included in that amount, so we
Yeah, the water is a lien on the property, it becomes a lien on the property.
It does, it does.
Even though there are many attempts right now to, uh, uh, legislations being proposed to, uh, prevent people from having their water shut off and for, for a good reason. But also a water becomes a lien on the property if not paid on time. Another question, uh, Mr. Sabri, what happens after my property is in forfeiture?
Well, I can mention that you get a lien, is a lien put on the property.
Okay.
And you start receiving notices every three months telling you that, um, you're behind and the interest rate goes up to one and a half percent a month or eighteen percent a year instead of twelve percent a year. And just, that was, that's, that's the key, the key points there is that, you know, you have a lien on the property. You can't, you can't refinance, you can't take advantage of any, can't sell it without going through the hassle, you know, paying the taxes all at once. You can't, uh, you just, it's just a, a, just a problem in a way. But it's a sign, we have, we're required by law to do this, to alert people ahead of time that if you don't address this, the next year, you're gonna get a foreclosure notice. You're gonna get a pending foreclosure notice. So it's a lot of warning, we do a lot of warning. We send out about twelve notices before somebody actually could get, lose their property.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, they don't lose it right away and they post the property and, and I know they take care of I, I do remember seeing them on their properties in a, in a yellow plastic bag, make sure it's damaged because of the rain or the weather, if it's snowing. So I, I, I know I have seen those. If someone is no longer the owner of a property, that's another question, and they keep receiving delinquent notices, how can they remove their name from the tax bill?
Yeah, this, this is one of the things that really irritates me. Uh, the, one of the big things that irritates me. We have the title companies, you know, they, they're supposed to remove. When we tell them to remove these properties, these names, they're supposed to remove them. So someone, it should not happen more than one time. But we've had it happen two, three times. You know, over my experience of being in the treasurer's office for ten years, five as a deputy, five as a treasurer, uh, I've seen a few cases where the people have received these notices like three times. They, they said, I've never owned the property, or I used to own it, I sold it. Why am I still getting notices? So what we do, we, we, we hold the title companies accountable. Uh, we, we make them, we're starting to go after them for money if we have, if they do this because we're paying them a lot of money to do this title work. And if they're noticing the wrong people or, you know, the wrong names, then they have to be accountable to us. Because it's causing people aggravation that they shouldn't receive. And it's not, it's not good. We apologize all the time and try to make sure that it doesn't happen.
I'd like to add here on, on this, the question related to this question is, if, if you sold the property, you're still receiving notices, you can contact the local city and, and they will make the correction. A lot of times the city does not have the accurate information on the, and the new owner. That's why it's very important for the new homeowner to file the, uh, the, uh, the homes, uh, the transfer affidavit with the city. Uh, and if they're occupied, the homestead exemption forms.
I would love to see, I would love to see a state law that would mandate the, uh, the property transfer affidavit filed when the deed is, is recorded. I would love to see that because that would eliminate a lot of this confusion. Because people, the new owner doesn't, doesn't go over and file their property transfer affidavit. The, the municipality still sends a notice to the previous owner. They have no idea that then there's a new owner.
Yeah, and, and, and many of them, uh, they get, uh, they forgot to file the homestead exemption form and they're paying non-homestead taxes all of these years. Okay, uh, he, here's, here's the scenario that I mentioned to you earlier, Mr. Sabri. So let's say this property goes to foreclosure in any given city in Wayne County. And the, the money that was owing to the county and back taxes in municipalities, let's say it was about fifty thousand. And the home is sold for a hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
We, we know that the county gets the fifty, what happens to this other fifty thousand?
That's, that's a great question. This year, this summer, this past summer, we had a, a decision handed down by the Supreme Court in a Raffielli versus Oakland County case.
Yes.
Uh, which said that if you're an owner of a property and you lose it to foreclosure, you can file a claim for anything above the taxes owed and the expenses to foreclose and conduct the auction. So out of that fifty thousand, maybe the treasurer's office spent three thousand dollars foreclosing and conducting the auction for that particular property, just say. Uh, that's probably pretty generous, but they say it's three thousand dollars. And that means there's another forty seven thousand dollars is considered excess proceeds. This excess proceeds used to go to Wayne County.
Okay.
Used to go into the, to the treasurer's office. And part of it would go to, be sent to the general fund of the county. Uh, this, the municipalities, all the taxing jurisdictions still, still receive the base tax and the interest, the interest, some interest. So they'll, they won't be affected by this, this decision.
They'll still get their money regardless.
Get their money anyway, uh, their portion of the, of the auction proceeds. The libraries, the community college, all of them will receive their money. It's the county um, that won't get the excess proceeds. Now, interesting, interesting thing is, in December, the legislature passed a couple of bills uh, that said that if, if you file a claim by July first, you could be eligible for excess proceeds. But you, the, the former owner and any other interested party is eligible to file this claim. So if there was a mortgage on the property or any other liens, those individuals who have these liens or mortgages, they could also, we say claw, clawback in, and try to get some of that forty seven thousand dollars that's available. But you have to file a claim by July first. This year is the first year. We just received information in January about how this is gonna work. So we're sending out our notices, letting people know. I suspect that most people won't know, won't realize because of the short notice. That by July first, they have to file a claim in order to be eligible for excess proceeds. But I'm sure that next year, we will have a multitude of people, you know, filing claims uh, by July if they lose their property because they will be eligible for the excess proceeds. That's a huge decision.
Yeah, so, so I, 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 I remember some particulars about this case, uh, Mr. Sabri, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the, the property was lost because it was so a small amount of
Like eight dollars, it was eight dollars. And then with interest, interest and penalties, I think it came to a few hundred dollars.
Yes. Thousand or something, yeah.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, shouldn't we have some kind of, of, of mechanism or protection in place that, you know, we should not foreclose on properties for small amount of money?
No, no, we, we have it, we usually, we're usually good at this in our, in Wayne County. We usually do this on purpose. We pull things under a certain amount of money, we pull them out. Because it's easy to collect that money. It's, in, in our opinion, is if someone owes, you know, five hundred dollars, it, it makes sense to foreclose on that property. We're gonna collect their five hundred dollars. We're gonna get that money from them. Isn't, and over, over the next years, no doubt, they will get that money. So sometimes though, things fall through the cracks. And we had a case similar to that. That, that was an apartment building. We, what we did one year, we say all the owner occupied properties owe less than a thousand dollars, we took them out. Because we had, we got some funding, we had, we worked with the people, we said it doesn't make sense, we got them out. But it wasn't an owner occupied property, it was an apartment building. So now that, that property ended up, it, it was, they owe some, a few hundred dollars. Ended up selling the property for a hundred thousand dollars. And so it's one of the lawsuits out there that's, that we have to deal with in the future, you know? Because people want the, they wanna go back and get their, their excess proceeds. So, you know, we've had, we've had some cases where this has happened in our county, but we make a concentrated effort not to do that. And that, and that was a mistake, you know, uh, Oakland County may, and in our case, same here. If we knew that that was the case, we would not have let that go through. We just, you know, no way we would let it go through, it didn't make sense.
But so going back to what you mentioned, uh, people have until July first to file a claim. Money. And this excess money would apply for which year? Prior year or the one that they foreclosed on?
Just the year of foreclosure.
Just the year of foreclosure.
Like the two thousand eighteen taxes in the foreclosed, in the auction of twenty twenty one.
I see. So if someone had lost their home for taxes prior to two thousand eighteen, uh, let's say two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, uh, they're not eligible right now for any of this money?
That's what's in, that's what's in court right now.
That's what's in court, okay.
That's what's in court, yeah. People, we're fighting, we're fighting in court, with people who want money. They wanna go back ten years, six years, two years. You know, that, that people wanna go back. So we're just fighting in court. I can't have, I don't have any idea how it's gonna turn out. But of course, we're, you know, you know, our position is that we don't want it to go back at all. We just wanna go forward.
Yeah.
But that's the treasurer's position, you know, yeah.
Well, um, this is, uh, this was a great discussion, Mr. Sabri. Do you have any closing remarks before we, uh, we sign off here?
Well, I just, I just
Tell the homeowner or the business owners.
I really enjoyed this discussion myself too. I think, I think you had some very, very good questions. I wanna say that the main thing is the people have to contact us. Um, we, we want, also, um, I had a couple of cases, I wanna mention this. People come in and say, you know, the city overcharged the Livonia, Detroit, whatever. They say they overtaxed me, you know, I'm, I don't want, this is too much. It doesn't, that doesn't help our, in our office because our, we, our job is to try to collect the delinquent taxes. And while you're fighting with the municipalities, we want you to just calm down and work with us so we can help you save your property. So don't focus on the, the amount of taxes, we don't have anything to do with that. We're here to help you save it. And like I said, if you know someone who's in trouble, you have them contact us as well. Should you want me to give the numbers out again?
Yes, please do, please do.
Yeah, our, our email address is taxinfo at Wayne County dot com, T A X I N F O at Wayne County dot com. Our phone number is three one three two two four five nine nine zero, it's three one three two two four five nine nine zero. And our website, we can get a lot of information, treasurer dot Wayne County dot com. So please contact us. We're, we're working hard to make sure that people stay in their properties and their businesses don't lose their, their property as well. When business is closed, then employees lose their jobs. And we don't want that to happen either. That's very, that's very important to us as well.
Uh, also, I wanna mention something, Mr. Sabri. If I'm not mistaken, your office also uh, has some marketing material in different languages to help homeowners understand their options. Did we have something like that, for example, in Arabic and Spanish?
We have some information in, in Arabic and Spanish. Uh, we also, we're working on getting everything done in the languages. And we have some in Bengali too, but not, not everything. We don't have everything done, we're working on, on doing that. We have a couple of people in the office that translate, speak Arabic and Spanish. That can help, they help when you, if a person comes down, uh, and, and on the phone if they have problems, uh, when they call us. Also, I wanna mention one more thing, Veterans Affairs, there's a, there's an office of Veterans Affairs in Wayne County.
Yes, four hundred Monroe, right?
Monroe, they're, they're on the fourth floor.
Yes.
Uh, I wanna give out their number too, because veterans can get some, actually get funding if they're, uh, eligible for some help. Three one three two two four five zero four five. It's three one three two two four five zero four five. That's Veterans Affairs. If you're a veteran, you don't have to put any money down to do a payment agreement with our office. And that's the same for any, uh, fire, firefighter, police officer, first responders, EMS and healthcare workers. All you have to do is show their ID and then come to our office and they get no payment plan with no money down.
They can come in. All frontline workers.
All frontline workers, yes.
Would qualify, uh, uh, to enter into payment agreements without putting any down payment.
Any down payment.
Okay.
That's important.
Including the veterans.
Including the veterans, yes.
Yeah, but they still have to pay interest though, right?
They still have to pay interest, they still have to start paying the next month, but they don't have to put any money down at that time.
Okay. Very, very useful information. We covered a lot of areas. I'm glad you mentioned this about the veterans again. Uh, because there are many veterans who are struggling. Recently, I had one veteran reach out to me. He missed the deadline because of the pandemic in Dearborn, but we were able to, uh, you know, uh, help him out and, and it worked out good. Uh, Mr. Sabri, I really wanna thank you for your time. Uh, I wanna thank you for your insight. This was very useful information. Uh, again, the message to all the homeowners and business owners out there, if you are delinquent on your two thousand seventeen taxes, it's very important that you reach the, the Wayne County Treasurer's Office and enter into a payment agreement uh, before you lose your business or, uh, your home. The last thing the county wants to see is an abandoned building uh, or a, a home that's been abandoned. That's not their intention. They wanna work with the homeowners. And so make sure you reach out to them early and, and I'm sure they will work with all of you. Uh, there are many programs out there with nonprofit organizations if you can't make your payments. And the treasurer's office will direct you to the different resources throughout Wayne County. Uh, again, I wanna thank you, uh, for, for this discussion, Mr. Sabri, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Commissioner Baydoin. I really enjoyed the forum and I hope to do this again.
Thank you, we will do it again. Thank you.
All right, all right, good night.